John.
John, you wanna hit your mic? We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at six fifty-four. Roll call shows present. John Murray, Heather Bishop, Jackie and. Mike Silva. I say it right, last name?
You got it.
All right. All right, uh. First item of business, consideration to approve meeting minutes from October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there anyone that has any questions on that? Now to entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
I was absent. Same.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Uh, unscheduled citizen participation. Is there anyone in the audience here to talk about something not on the agenda? Look how you guys fill out the rose.
Yeah.
All right, um, conflicts of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest with the one item of business?
No conflict.
Conflict, excuse me, item of discussion? All right, um, we'll move on, uh, to items for discussion. Our first and only item, sketch plan review, Leatherwood, major land use development proposal. And it, and I'm not sure is that.
Thank you. We, um. I'm in here, Steve, who's around here. We have with us Josh O'Haba from Peters Associates. Um, Peters was hired by the Board of Trustees to, um, act as our planners during the interim while we don't have a planner. Um, Josh has been handling, um, this item. So we have Josh on the line. Josh, thanks for being here and saying hello to our planning commission.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Welcome. Some, um, good to go?
Good to go.
All right, perfect. Well, um, thank you, Steve, and thank you Chairman Shaki and members of the Plan Commission. So, um, happy to kind of give you an introduction on this item, the sketch plan for Leatherwood, and then hand over to the, uh, applicants representatives who I know are there and very eager to share their vision for the site. Um, if I can, Lena, I'm gonna steal the screen if that's possible.
Yep, that's fine.
Perfect. Let's see what lets me do.
I will let you.
Oh, you gotta stop sharing first, I guess. There we go. All right, let's see if I can do this without messing up too many things. So first, just want to share the location of the site. I'm sure a lot of you are very familiar with this as the applicant was before both Plan Commission and the Board. Uh, earlier this year during the summer, as a little bit more formalized pre-application process, um. Just so, just because of the complexity of the project and the impact it'll have in the, in the downtown core area. Um, you know, based on just the new infill. So, um, here we have, you know, of course, the community. I'm gonna jump into the Leatherwood site just so you can all, um, get your bearings straight on it. So. What we're looking at here from the Leatherwood site, and of course, you can also reference the attachments within your packet, is this lot here where I'm kind of circling my cursor, which is currently a vacant lot owned by the applicant. And then these parcels, three parcels down here next to the museum, kind of to the west, um, around Garfield, Lake Avenue, and across the alleyway. So, it's a pretty large site, about a half block, um, of parcels within the core area. Uh, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna change my screen, which I don't know. I probably have to stop to reshare. So, um, just bear with me for a second. Get this pulled up. See. Apologize. There we go. There we go. All right, is everyone able to see kind of the site plan image on their side?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Um. So again, the applicant, what they're looking to do with the site is, um, develop, it's about twenty-four residential units are being proposed. But on the ground floor area, there's about eighteen thousand square feet of commercial tenant space. Uh, within the, the various buildings, there's about forty-four off-street dedicated residential parking spaces, uh, based on these garages that front the alleyway and load off the alleyway. Um, if you've all seen that alleyway, it definitely, uh, has quite the, uh, hump in it as it moves, as you drive down there or you walk it. Um, we were fortunate to walk the site with the applicant's team last month, and, um, the plan is to help regrade that alleyway, flatten it out a little bit more. So it is a little bit easier for people to access. Um, and then, of course, onsite snow storage. What the applicant proposes is using a lot of the flat or rough profiles of the building. And then, you know, based on any adjustments to the architecture, based on our, our discussions here and moving into the preliminary phase. Um, there's also the open space area through the center of the property in kind of this phase one plaza space that goes kind of in the north-south vicinity, right in the middle of the site. And there's about thirteen thousand square feet of open space through this area, a combination of plaza space, open space. And then, of course, all the trash recycling, those elements are enclosed, um, off the corners of the buildings, kind of within garages, those areas of the site. Um, in terms of staff's analysis, what we did is we looked at the comments, feedback, um, from prior town staff, as well as feedback from the commission, the board, from the summer meeting, and looked at what the applicant has modified, uh, for their site. Since that meeting, the applicant has addressed, I would say, most, if not almost all those comments and concerns that were raised at that time. Um, there's some that, you know, we, we didn't quite have access to, so I couldn't see every, every comment, but a lot of those comments the applicant worked through. What they're looking to do is really account for all the different infrastructure needs with the site. Some of the details, the applicant did submit, some infrastructure details, uh, drainage report information. Um, and a lot of that was just based on, there was some confusion regarding that more formalized pre-application in the summer, that that wasn't quite a sketch plan. So the applicant is before you now for the sketch plan. So in your packet, you have a little bit more of that preliminary, uh, development plan, uh, details with the applicant's narrative and details that they've provided. Um, I will say, I don't know where the bullet came from in the memo that shows thirty-two feet maximum height. I think that must have been a carryover or some sort of an issue, but, um, ignore that bullet as thirty-five feet is the height limit in the area. But of course, that is one area you've seen in your memo and report that the applicant is looking to, um, deviate from and has requested a variance from. Uh, we won't go into the variance details too much on our side since the applicant has submitted that information. Of course, there's a quasi judicial project. Um, but a few of the areas that the applicant is looking for relief from with the site is for the off-site open space allowance, and that would be at eight twenty-five Lake Avenue. There's about a block and a half west of the property. West northwest, um, considering the rear setback encroachment for garage parking at eight twenty-five. And then allowing, um, existing properties on this site, it's more or less down in this kind of phase five location off Lake Avenue here to allow that residential unit to remain residential on the ground floor. And then the maximum building height that we've discussed, and a lot of the maximum building height request, uh, comes from both topography. Constraints as the site moves to the south, there's quite a steep drop-off. Um, maintain consistency with what's around the site, what's within the vicinity, as well as incorporate those architectural embellishments with the roof pitch, some of the other elements that go into the architectural design. Um, with that, happy to answer any questions, but happy to turn it over to the applicant's representatives as they can give you a little bit more detail on the project as well.
All right, thank you. Uh, yeah, if you wanna come up and give your name and address for the record and.
Of course. Thank you all. I'm Gabe from MA. I'm the lead architect on the project with Scott Munn. And, uh, yeah, we're excited to be here again today to reopen the discussion. I think, you know, as Josh mentioned, we did a sort of informal or slightly more informal sketch plan review back in April, and there was a ton of feedback that we got from that process, and it was truly informative. We went from there to a workshop, you might call it, with the Board of Trustees and the Commission in May, and we discussed, you know, more details about infrastructural elements, grading of the alley, architectural sort of articulation and scale, parking calculation, that kind of stuff. And essentially, we came out of that workshop with some fairly large revisions to the project that were entirely based on the fact that we really heard the feedback from the groups involved and are excited to make this project work for the town at large. So what you're seeing today in the packet and in our drawings in general is, uh, revision that mostly consists of no more dead-end alley. Now, we have regraded the alley, allowing for vehicular traffic, winter traffic to still move through the site from that existing sort of alley frontage. Um, and we've also reconfigured the building furthest to the east will be event centers in our plans so that it has some commercial space. Plaza restaurant space on that ground floor, which we think is going to work really nicely for the sort of pedestrian activation that we're proposing here. Um, otherwise, we're really, um, excited to move forward from the sketch process into actual preliminary review. Final review and, and eventually into reality with the project. So today, we're really looking for any sort of feedback and direction that you may have for us so that we can continue to revise this and, and make the project work. So, uh, with that, I'll, I'll hand it over if there's any other comments from, from you guys. Um, otherwise, we're really open to feedback and, and excited to get going on this.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Um. I guess questions from the commission, um. Can you explain what's going on with eight twenty-five Grand Avenue? Cause I'm quite. I guess I'm confused by what you guys are requesting for that as it relates to this project.
Sure. Yeah. So right now, the eight twenty-five Lake Ave site is sort of dilapidated. Um, it's not used for anything at all. There's a couple old buildings sort of falling over on it, and generally speaking, it's used for the boardwalk plaza, for the hub buildings, parking and trash. Um, so we are looking to formalize the parking on the alley frontage of eight twenty-five. And we're looking to clear the rest of the site to build a park and a public space. And so the vision is that it would be heavily landscaped, and it would be generally softscape, dog park, sort of picnic park area. And we see it as a really interesting node, sort of on the way to the Point Park walking trail. Um, and the applicant owns the parcel and is looking to sort of formalize the parking and trash for boardwalk plaza because it's adjacent to that project. So we wanted to hold it into this project because we think that the introduction of open space on Lake Avenue is really important and could be a really nice amenity for the community. And we also think that the core district, the core commercial district that the Leatherwood parcel is in, is sort of the perfect place for a little bit more density than the mixed-use open space rules call for in the Grand Lake Code. And we thought by transferring the air rights, the open space of eight twenty-five to Leatherwood, it would guarantee that eight twenty-five remains a nice park and a nice parcel. You know, into the future and would also allow us to build the plaza we want and the density that we think is appropriate for the Leatherwood site.
So the park would be dedicated to the public?
Well, yes, it would be a public park and it would be, um. Yeah, the, the lot would remain a park into the future. We wouldn't find any development there whatsoever.
That's eight twenty-five Lake.
Eight twenty-five Lake, yeah, directly south of the hub.
Yeah, right, right. Uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, but not on the Ellsworth, but the next.
On the corner.
That's right.
Corner, right.
So you're proposing that for trash or the hub building and then on-street parking on Lake Avenue?
You know, we're, what we're thinking is that we would structure a garage off the alley side of eight twenty-five. And those, that would be dedicated to the boardwalk plaza residents who right now park on street.
Okay, so how much of the, how much of the lots getting to, is it gonna become open space and park?
Sure. It's, I think it's roughly sixty-two hundred square feet. It's like seventy-five percent of the lot. It is on the open space calculation plan, if you'd like to go down to that. Um. Thank you.
All the difference.
Oh, there are more than what's in here in the presentation?
Sorry.
Is there more than what's in the presentation? Okay, yeah, that's what I was like.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
I think it's like.
Parking right here. This is the corner, and then I guess you're gonna get rid of the.
Well, it looks like they have a garage here with.
Yeah, I think it's.
Three spaces. I don't know if there's.
Right there.
Yes.
Yeah. So, so right here on the upper left corner of that site plan. Absolutely. It's happening. That is, uh, what we're thinking that we can clean out the way edges. Provide a night park space. And then provide a structure garage that's on street, or on-street parking. There are no further streets. Oh, okay. So the current informal parking for boardwalk plaza can be formalized and, and sent back to the alley.
Is that three parking lots or spaces?
Three garages.
Yes.
Oh, that'll be.
It'll be like one structured garage with three doors.
Oh, I see. Okay, okay.
Dumpsters are on the east side there? Is that what I understand?
Yes, yeah, because we have internet for, for trash to get serviced, but they're not out here.
Screened? Are they screened in this drawing?
Yeah, we'll have an enclosure.
Those serve the hub?
Yes.
Not this property. This property will have its own dumpsters.
Absolutely. Yeah, this project will have dumpsters for residential and commercial space in each building.
Okay.
And I see roughly five, eight parking spots included here. Is that correct?
Are we talking about eight twenty-five?
We're still talking about eight twenty-five.
So. There's something called an on-street parking credit. And that's what I'm drawing when you think of striping here. We're not proposing that parking is striped this way. We are saying code allows us to count parking from these front.
For the. For the park? For the park? Or are you trying to count these for Leatherwood?
I don't think. We are not counting them for Leatherwood. We're just showing them for the sake of that, the credit line in.
Okay, now's my question. Is this included in the hundred and four number where I was kind of going toward at the end there?
No, no. Ideally, you know, we're, we're reading the amount, the, the amount of places people can park on street so that they're not flooding the commercial district. Because some people may park here, use the park and then walk in.
Yes, open space would still be privately owned.
Yes.
Privately owned?
Yes, privately owned, but more publicly. It's not for that sort of thing.
So like a public easement across it? Yeah, well, if there's more, I didn't realize there's more application or more presentation. So if you'd like to come up, we can.
Yeah.
Then that way may answer some of our questions.
We're on this topic rather than jumping around. I'd rather get it knocked out.
And if you can, just give your name and address for the record.
Eight twenty-eight, or Jim Kreitzer, project manager for, uh, Spirit Lake Condos LLC. Uh, my address is eight twenty-eight Grand Avenue, number two oh eight.
Um, thank you.
So when we brought this into, uh, this open space, let me talk about it first. When we brought this in, uh, in the meeting before, we talked about the reason for it was to try to get the density of the project in one spot down in the lake where all the people are already at and try to get it to use it down there. And, and use that as open space. Uh, we have originally planned to build more condos on that site. Um, but when I started looking at the trail system, the trail system coming from the lake, coming down the little pathway, when you go up the hill to the west from the lake, from the parking area, you come down the hill, you go over to the historical site around the corner, and then you get onto the trail system that goes down to the Davin Haven to the park uh, down on the lake at the canal and then back up. And so in talking to different staff at the time, um, this was almost a year ago now. Um, we discussed how that would tie into basically the historical site, get traffic moving, it would be a good stopping point. I live in the building at the hub, and I, I see how many people walk that section from the corner of the hub down to, uh, Point Park. And especially in the busy weekends, there's a constant stream of people and they all have dogs and they're all stopping in people's yards and they're all. And so my idea was to basically create a dog park, put a couple of, uh, picnic tables out there. Create access. That's the reason the parking is like this. We could put parking along here. She brought this up at the last meeting, um, that she would really like to see some parking along this park. So that people have a place to park and use the park and also extra parking for busy times. So we, we have, uh, parking here and here, but this is the perfect place for people to come into the park and the perfect place for them to get out. And so that's why we took the parking spaces out of here and I took them out here because if there's cars in here, all the way that's why the parking is striped as the edge of delineated on this map the way it is.
Um, is that parallel parking on the sides?
Perpendicular.
Oh, I see diagonal. Okay, I see that.
Here, Jim.
John.
That can be designed any way that.
Oh, right, yeah.
That just seemed like to be the best fit for it to get the most sites, uh, parking stations, excuse me. Um, it's just gravel basically, and we'd clean it all up and make it nice. All the creams and all the stuff. It is your question about the storage space. I have, uh, several different photos that I've taken in cities of block concrete structure with, uh, metal gates, big poles on the corners that would, uh, and which I'm gonna, Gabe is, I forwarded some of them to Gabe, but we're gonna design that and show that to you guys at the, uh, preliminary plat stage, preliminary development stage. And so that you can see what that parking structure will look like. But it is a very heavy-duty, uh, enclosed structure. Right now, the trash for the hub has been there since the hub was, uh, started, which has been about three years, three summers now it's been being used. It was originally designed when we did it to have the garbage behind the old bowling alley. But when we were finishing up the project at the bowling alley, when people came around Lake Avenue, it's, I don't have a map to show you. Well, it's right in this spot right here. When people were coming around here and driving here, that row of condos that's back here on the old bowling alley, there's a row of condos. All of their headlights were coming straight into these people's condos. And so we put landscaping in there. We still have plenty of parking for the hub project. We had extra parking. We still do have a few sides extra. Um, and so we put landscaping in there and put the dumpsters over here because we knew would be developing this at some time, and we had never moved that. Uh, in the last plan written, when I'm talking to Kim over the last year and a half, not anytime recently, it's been last year at least. Um, she knew that this project was going to be coming forward, and we had discussed putting it here, and she, uh, we were either gonna tear out that landscaping or redo that landscaping or put it, leave it where it's at now. So our plan is to leave it where it's at now. Um, as far as the private ownership, our goal would be is to leave that to the town, uh, that section of ground. Actually, I, we would not want to keep it in private ownership. Give it to the town. We'll have to work out the details of the maintenance of the park. If the town would accept the maintenance of the park once we develop it, if not, then we would have to figure out, uh, internally with our, um, uh, homeowners association for Leatherwood, it would have to be maintained by the HOA of Leatherwood. Um, either way, we would prefer that the town would take it. But if not, then the HOA of Leatherwood would maintain it. Okay. Um, but we would prefer to get it out of private ownership and get it into the town's hands is what we would prefer to do. Um, I talked about the trail system. Just a couple of the things I want to bring up. We, one of the things we talked about when uh, in past developments that I've done in town that the group has done and, uh, is, uh, always the height of the buildings on Grand Avenue. Uh, there's always a question with the new step-back rules that you guys put in in the last year and a half with the step-backs. I, I think, pretty sure that's how you did, um, call that is the step-backs of the buildings going back on the sides. And, uh, and so we, instead of going three stories on Grand Avenue, uh, if you look at the maps, we, we originally had planned on the buildings are on Grand Avenue. It's the grocery stories, but then we decided let's keep it at two stories to reduce the impact on Grand Avenue with the height of the buildings, and we'll do, uh, we'll go, we need a little bit more height on the other side, um. Somewhere between forty-five and fifty feet, I believe, is what we need, but that's from the center line of the grade of the hill. So if this is the alley and this is the lake, uh, the code allows forty feet from the center line up. Okay, we're gonna need somewhere between forty-five and fifty to get that done. We did do a, we did shoot the dimensions and he's been wanting to have a map for you guys at, uh, the preliminary development stage of, and I can't remember the name of that building that is right. Eagles Landing. We went out and we took, we got the height of Eagles Landing and the height of the other buildings, and we have a, a map that will show that our, the height of our buildings will not be higher than Eagles Landing. It will be equal or less than that is where our heights will be at the same, so that it doesn't have any higher impact when you're on the lake and looking back at town.
Is Eagles Landing catty corner to the boardwalk plaza or east of that, just to confirm?
I think we had him do both sides, Michael. I'm not sure.
Okay, there's multiple structures there. I just.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we had him do that and the bed building to the, to the east of that, but I asked him to do the south side of Eagles Landing where it goes down the hill, the north side in a couple of spots and the next door building, and I don't know the name of that. It's like.
So the code, the code reads that you take the measurement at the middle of the parcel?
I'm pretty sure that's right.
So the code calculation right now says, uh, thirty-five foot maximum from the local. Larger five feet.
Right, you get an additional five.
So we're, the variance is free that we're questioning for that calculation instead of working to the container.
Okay.
But I would add to that, that are removing the third floor on Grand Avenue, plus the back wisdom scale of all the architect. Larger building, no. That's back. It has by a common. Won't see it then. But.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Well, and knowing that you have a variance coming, we, we won't get into too much of the detail of it, but, um, just cause we'll respect the, you know, the variance process that has to come forward, but thank you for the explanation.
A, a question with that, is there an elevator shaft on that western aspect with kind of a small gable roof, it looks like? I know that's kind, that isn't included in the forty-foot height possibly.
Sorry, Gabe, can you come up just so we have it on record and so Josh can hear you as well?
Yeah, so looking at the elevations here on that west side where you guys were speaking of this possible variance, uh, there seems like there's a top of an elevator shaft there covered with a gable roof. Is that correct? Based on?
It's a vertical circulation for elevator and stair.
Okay.
Head on top for roof.
Okay, there, that's what I wanted to, to mention. I know our code, I'd have to read into it a little further, but there's different, uh, height restrictions for those as well, so.
Yeah, I, I know technically that's allowed to be sixty feet, the, the sort of breaking of that forty-foot line, and we can get into that with the variance process, but effectively, we can plan the building to the forty-foot standard, but it will be a flat pair of it to get our third story in there. So the variance would allow us to articulate the roof in a more digestible manner.
So can we talk parking? So I guess, um. You're counting parking for all the commercial, I understand Grand Avenue, but Garfield, you're, you're counting parking there even though it doesn't exist, right? Are you proposing to place parking there?
Um, it's sort of similar to my answer on the eight twenty-five parking piece. The, the way the code reads is that a right-of-way of eighty feet or greater allows for us to gain onsite parking or, excuse me, on-street parking credits for that frontage line. Um, so we are just simply calculating. Um, so we are just simply calculating the length of our property line in Garfield. Through that on-street parking credit. Um, we're not necessarily proposing that striping happens there, but I think we're all, we may have a larger discussion. How we handle some of the right-of-way improvements that might be required or if we need to go. Through a variant process to have less parking because of striping, which is.
Okay.
And on Garfield, that's where you have the eight. Eight point five parking spaces?
Yes, point zero eight five spaces per foot. I'm not really sure how.
But saying credit, yes, because it says credits available for on-street parking adjacent to and contiguous to any property. Over eighty feet, but it's available on-street parking. So if there, you'd have to actually develop it, correct?
You know, I'm not clear on that.
Okay, so I, I, and I guess my question concern is if, if you're counting for the commercial Lake Avenue, which is already. Um, that parking's not available. Because they, the town's already striped that area for pedestrian. And then Garfield, that parking's not actually. There. We're starting to get to where we have a lot of hypotheticals, but we don't have a lot of parking for the commercial that's being proposed.
Well, I, I do intend to put. Group intends to put parking along Garfield. That's always been my. My thought process is to, Gabe and I haven't discussed that yet. We uh, but I've always, always assumed that there would be parking, because if you look at Rockies, it goes to the alley and it stops. I would assume just to carry that all the way down. With a boardwalk in front of it, a covered boardwalk.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think if, I don't have that, but I think it's in the sheets if you guys have.
But I think, yeah, that, so that's great for Garfield. I, I think. Lake Avenue is a concern just because if, you know, that, again, that, that parking's not even there anymore, so I don't know how we could count that.
I, if I'm not mistaken, I think the code says if you're regardless of there's parking or not, because we had this at Park Avenue, we added it. Of we had the calculation run at the, at Portal. But I think you're allowed to use whatever usable. Linear feet there is across the front of your property at the eight point five or the eight point six or whatever it is feet. Uh, and to count that towards the parking. Um, it, it, we should be allowed, I'm. We can, we're coming in way late in the game and I'm talking like years and decades late in the game. As far as the parking on Lake Avenue, there's been so many discussions even just in the short time that we've owned. This property about Lake Avenue. And with all the design and stuff that went on a year and a year and a half ago, I don't remember exactly when it was. With no, with all pedestrian traffic. Um, we want parking on Lake Avenue. But the town, of course, does not like it. As a developer, of course, you want parking in front of your commercial space. Me walking down the street and I would assume Gabe and I would assume Dave walking down the street, we don't want parking there because it looks better. We want people walking with their kids and strollers and stuff. But to get the most per the square foot, whether it be a lease or a sale, people are gonna want their businesses to have access for people to park their car there. We don't expect that, but we do expect a credit for that parking. Garfield, I expect that we're gonna have to build part. I think I want, because we want to be able to have people park there and walk around the front of it and get into the restaurants and stuff.
Yeah, it'll just be, you know, I think that's something that. We had, the town levels on, we don't have to flush that out a little bit more, because if. If Lake Avenue does become a pedestrian only, how, you know, you know, how's that parking going to work that you? Can get people to use Garfield.
Well, if you look on the plan, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of Garfield. Um, right here. So let's assume this doesn't exist. Right here, but we get a credit for it. And assume this does exist. There's a, a cul-de-sac here. That people come down and they turn around and the site, the town's parking lot is right here.
Okay.
It, there should be a cul-de-sac down there now, because. I can't tell you how many times I count that. I see people go down there, they look at each other, they get. A man and wife getting yelling at each other, why did you come in here? You know, and then they back around and there's people walking all over and it's, it's a mess and it's. But that's what our intent was, is to call this act down here.
So you would do the cul-de-sac?
Well, we don't want to do. I feel that that's the town's. But that's more of it's on the table. I think that in the plan, it needs to be in the plan, but. I don't feel that it's the developers' problem to fix that. The town collects tax, the county collector, the town collects an extra one percent use tax on everything and one percent sales tax on everything. And I feel that they should be, um. The ones that funds that. I don't want to work in the town right away. It's hard. There's just, we don't have any continuity in this town with staff. And it's, I, I, we've been through three town superintendents and every one of them has told me different things. None of them bad things, just different things. And so I'm following guidelines on other stuff. That always come back to make us look bad. But we, I just don't want to be working in the right of way. I don't even want to do the alley, but we, we need to do the alley to make this project work. And so I think it should be the town's responsibility to take care of that. And that will come up more, I'm sure.
Certainly will, but I mean, as a developer here. With the, the amount of improvements that you're proposing. Having to get into the right of way and do some of these improvements. Especially as it relates to, if Lake Avenue ends up getting close to pedestrians, I mean, it only. If you want to make that parking usable on Garfield, you're gonna have to do the, the cul-de-sac.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, and I, we want the parking in Garfield. There's no doubt about it.
What is the right of way on Garfield? Is that, is it a hundred or is it less?
Yeah, and I think I would add to this discussion, you know, our first. Informal sketch plan review back in April, we had. Uncropped our site plan a little more. We were showing the beach and the, the public parking adjacent and the. Conversation unfolded into a lot of items about Lake Avenue specifically. That didn't really have a path to revolution. And the general conclusion from the discussion was. Lake Avenue improvements, the fact that we all kind of agree it'd be better pedestrian only, et cetera, um. Is not really on the table in terms of the scoping. So we know that's a, that's a whole can of worms. I'm on board to talk about it on the design side, but I think it's. Probably a little bit more than those.
What is the distance uh between uh, you know, the green area in front of uh, on the south side of Park Avenue? Between the green area and uh, you know, your. Boardwalk there, I guess, your walkway.
Um, I guess, sorry, I'm.
What's the width of the greenway?
Right in front of it.
What's the width of what?
Wait, wait, say that again?
There's not enough room to put parking and leave and have access through there and leave the existing park the way it is.
Right.
Yeah, there's, there's not enough room to do that.
Really, that's, that's what I was getting at. So you're talking about cutting. Or. It would have to be cut back uh. Uh, to the south and widen. The roadway.
If there was parking, that's correct.
To accommodate uh the parking in front of the.
How many parking spaces are proposed on Lake Avenue or are being counted?
Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
I believe that's right, yeah. Uh, it's on the next page right here.
Yeah, it's just a lot of parking that. Won't, you know, won't actually be there that you're. Taking credit for, so that's all my, that's my concern, that's all.
It's already existing. Already is existing restaurant there, there's no parking there now. There's the hotels that people. Would unload and go in. Hotel that's down there, the three-level hotel. Um, and. So that it, it's being used already without parking. Some people do park and then they would report it, you're not supposed to, there's signs. It's never been. Really, uh, what would I say enforced? Um, through the years, people parallel park. Yeah, but again, our plan is not to build parking. Our plan is just to get credit for that.
Okay, well, work that out with, with staff ahead of preliminary plat, so we know for sure if that's how the code reads or not.
So get credit for non-existent parking.
Yeah, that's what they're saying. Yeah, I mean, because the code does have the word available on-street parking, so that's, that's where I guess I'm. That's, that's what I'm basing it off of. It's, it's not available, so.
Yeah, and you know, our general approach when we started thinking about this was activating Lakeout. Taking away the sort of unused Leatherwood building and the less than used event center. Would activate a lot more pedestrian traffic. And obviously, right there on the lakefront, part of why we're cutting the plaza is to reconnect Grand Avenue with that lakeside. And so it seemed like the sort of perfect location for take their parking to not.
Oh, I, I completely agree.
Yeah, and, and ideally, you know, in the planning sense, there's public parking on either end of Lake. So it could certainly work well for there to be maintained with emergency vehicle access, but no actual, you know. Delineated parking for. For normal passengers, right?
Right.
Um, yeah, it seems, seems apt for it, but certainly need to figure out how exactly.
When it may be that you have to pay for the, the parking as well, so if you don't have it. Pay for the, the difference in it. I believe that's a option in the code. Um, and I'm not sure, I mean. If the town's long-term vision is to, to keep that parking lot. On the west side of the, you know, like, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's where the problem we have. There's, there's always talk about what to do with all that down there, but there's never any decision. But probably not because the finances aren't there for it. And number two, the, the time has not been spent to decide. We don't want to wait for that. We don't want to have that portion of that infrastructure as part of this development. We just want to get credit for those parking spaces. Whatever the town decides to do, whether it be in a week or ten years. I don't know when that day is gonna come.
Okay.
Now, I, I have some questions about the commercial space and I, I know how the code reads that do you have to have the commercial space for the first? Floor, um, fifty feet back. But I noticed that there are a lot of empty commercial spaces in your other projects. And I'm wondering. Um, if. You know, it's hard to sell those beautiful, um. Commercial condos. Are you going to have any problem here or are you counting on lakefront? Filling these and maybe having some empty spaces elsewhere?
Well, Bruce's uh thought process about that is, is we don't have a choice because it's in the code. Um, the loops we've gone through at Park Avenue, excuse me. At Portal Crossing, uh, to try to use some of that commercial for residential. Um, Willer won't work out, they don't know yet. We would prefer to put more residential on the main level. That is our hundred percent preference. But um, that's not what the code allows us to do. Do we think we'll have a hard time filling it? Absolutely, especially on Garfield. Um, we don't want to put all that commercial, but we can't put residential there without commercial. We literally can't build anything there. Without putting the commercial for the code. So. We have no interest in the commercial on the corner. I'm probably gonna have to bring. Try to recruit someone to come in from outside again, like the group did for the hub project. Try to fill the space down in Portal. We just. There's just no local traffic to maintain and run those businesses. It's very, very difficult. And so to answer your question, we don't want eighteen thousand to the commercial. We don't even want the extra stuff on Grand Avenue, right? But we can't, you can't develop the project. Without putting the commercial there. We can't just go put residential there. You guys don't allow us by the code. We'd rather not do that. We'd rather put residential.
Well, I, I, I understand that. I'm just worried about all these um, unpurchased. Commercial suites. Um, and I see that as maybe. Causing a problem for finishing out this really large project because you need to sell everything in there. And I think it's gonna be really hard, um. And, you know, I, I know a lot of people would love to live lakefront, so. Turning that into residential would, would be what you would want to do. I just. I just don't know what we're gonna do with all these, you know, beautiful commercial spaces that no one wants to buy or rent.
We're agreeing. Roots in agreement. And um, it just. If, uh, how do you move forward with that in the code? How, how do we move forward? So I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I mean, we, we can. Go through and use that square footage and put residential in there at any time. Um, through this process and if we cut it in half or cut it down by two-thirds or redesign the main floor to. Um, to have little open spaces coming back into it, little notches or niches. Does that make sense what I was saying? Because we thought about that, because I haven't discussed it today, but.
How would you park such a thing?
We'd have to deal with parking somewhere. We'd have to figure that out. We don't have any more available parking in the back. We'd have to figure that out some.
Right, that's what I'm looking at. Even if you, even if you said, yeah, go ahead and do that. I mean, the last thing we'd want to. See is garages on the lakefront.
Right, maybe, maybe that's what Garfield is and there's garages that go up Garfield that are off the street and people are able to pull in, but then they're backing out into. Into traffic, but people back into traffic all the time, but I don't have the answer for that one right now. I don't know if I will get the answer for that. I don't, I don't know how to handle the. Residential application in that location. I mean. It's a motel, Commissioner Savon's motel, he has to have onsite parking. And, or people wouldn't have places for him to park. His guests park. And, and they do park on the street. I was parking in front of his. Business early in the spring and, and I went up and told Michael that I'll be out of there before the season starts, which I was. But it would fill up almost every night, on-street parking for the, for the lodges in town, for the stuff in the little. And I mean, there's. We're doing a project in Lakewood and they give you daytime credit for a commercial and nighttime credit for residential. And, and they, you got twenty spaces. They give you the twenty spaces credit during the daytime hours and at night you got twenty residential spaces because people park on the street. It's pretty common practice in the cities. And so.
Yeah, and it works well and. Other than. Snow, snow removal, it's, it's makes it more difficult.
Absolutely, it's a good point, thanks. Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean.
You look at those units that you're possibly talking about in Lakewood, you know, s- single family, you're assuming that these people are out working during the day. And customers are filling in those spots. When they come back from work, their parking spot is technically available. When you're looking at these units that are more than likely gonna be short-term rental type of housing. Those cars stay there all day, all night and stuff like that. There's not really the shuffle kind of like. You expect in that Lakewood scenario, you know, that. They're here to, either in downtown, they don't even leave to go get food or groceries, it's all here. That vehicle stays there more like lead twenty-four hours than twelve or twelve and eight, whatever the workday is, you know, so. Never heard of that scenario, but that's a good idea for these types of units for sure.
So you have nine phases proposed for this, um. What's your time? What's your proposed build out of this?
Well, we wanted. The goal would be the, the year one is to get the plaza constructed. Um, this area. Get the alley graded right away this spring. Get this plaza, get these buildings out this spring. The old motels are coming out. We've already done our habitat space tests and all that stuff and are ready to mitigate that, the asbestos, the little bit that's in there. And remove those buildings right and get this all graded this spring. Um, the, the event center and the two houses. This will be four condos. Uh, because there's three levels to the lake house, it'll be three layers of condos and then the tree house will come out over and be expanded over the top of that. So this section is phase one, which will start right away. And then depending on sales and interest. The, the, the next thing would be either one of these, this building probably. And or the first phase, which is here this. And let me explain the reason for all of the nine phases. Our county does not allow COs unless you CO the entire permit or the entire building. And so we have a problem with having to construct a. A big building and not being able to CO an individual unit. They don't allow us to do that, so we, we have to split it up into phases. I don't know if you remember. Me talking to you guys when we, we did the hub project. And we, we had. Three phases, uh, layer one, like the hub and the uh, stock market were one A and one B. And then the second level was two and three. And so we had to phase it by floors as long as the common elements were done. Then they would give a COs on those units and that's what we kind of proposing. With all the different phases, if you go to the, a different map here, I think it's the next second or third one that will show the phases. Okay. Things one is common areas and phase two is the commercial areas, so we want to get the commercial. Things one is the common areas, and phase two is the commercial areas, so we want to get the commercial remodeled as quick as we can and get that open. Maybe even by as early as the middle of next summer, because it's not a huge thing that we have to construct. And in the back part, which is now where the restaurant space is, will be the parking garage and and another condo. That would be an additional phase, and then the story that's over the top of that is phase four. So we have phase one, phase two, and phase three is this condo right here, which is already constructed. And so we can permit it separately and CO it separately. And so that we can get the CO on phase two. It has totally to do with with being able to get certificates of occupancy from the town, from the county.
Yeah.
Not so much that we want to do phases like that, it's just the only way to get it done. They won't. I've never had it happen before in forty-some years of doing this.
How long?
It could be ten years.
Okay.
Yeah. It depends on sales and and the need for it.
Out of curiosity, who places it?
Sorry, hey, oh, I'm sorry, we're not.
Sorry.
No public. Sorry. Other questions? I had a question on, what, you're looking up yours, um, the parking, so garages, sixteen-foot alley. Is that doable to pull out and? And the code allows for that?
But you requested an encroachment there, is that correct? Yeah, that's why I was confused. Let me see if I can find that note. That's what it was, but it jumped around. So your request, there's the o- the off-site open space, a height restriction. Um, the residential at street level, but then it said rear setback. What was that rear setback?
That's the alley, garage on the alley.
Cause it's not, cause it's not commercial.
Yeah. So.
So CT for the.
Yeah, it's like the Park Avenue. We were able to put parking spaces back there, and then we came back in later on and asked for garages, and you guys ran in the very end for the garages. And it works very well potentially. Now, these will be parallel to the alley. Uh, not perpendicular, because the garage is at Park, you pulled in and pulled in, but it's sixteen. The alley at Park is sixteen feet, the alley at Portal for all of the parking is sixteen feet. It's the same thing.
Look, can we talk about the massing of the the buildings? I guess particularly on on Grand Avenue. I appreciate, you know, your consideration of doing. Two stories and then, and trying to keep in in character with with the downtown. I just think you, and I know we're not approving the the drawings today or anything like that, but. Those are very blocky, very. They they need a lot of work to to get into that Western theme of what our downtown is. The hub's a beautiful building, but it's not a building that would fit in if you brought it into the, into the downtown, into more the decor. And so, um, I guess, you know, like when I looked at the the precedent study, you guys had some beautiful photos, but not a single one of them. In Grand Lake, so you're not using any of the precedent of what already is in town and what makes our downtown, so.
So I I think, I mean, in a really simple fashion, um, absolutely, we're on the same page. I'm smiling because I was expecting that feedback, really. But the way we've drawn up the project thus far is sort of a back and forth dealing with a lot of the entitlement calculations, making sure that we sort of. Have our footprints outlined for the city of open space and parking. Generally, planning the density of the development.
Okay.
And once we move from the standard plan process into the preliminary final, the architecture is going to take on a whole other level.
Okay.
Um, so essentially, you know, because we're not required to have construction document level detail here.
Of course, yeah.
What you're seeing. A a nod to that Grand Lake scale. We absolutely plan to align with the mountain. Sort of rustic character of the lack of. And we certainly brought down the scale of those grand, of the building to match that human scale.
Yeah, that part I I definitely appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, and so in general, it won't just.
Okay, yeah, cause I mean, I, and you guys probably obviously know this, but I mean, you're setting the the tone for what the downtown redevelopment can look like.
Yeah, well, and it's such a central site.
Yeah.
Right there.
Right.
This wall was.
Yeah, exactly.
So we know. And also wanted to activate and welcoming and be a bright spot and plaza through the winter time. We expect to be a really important, drawing part of the new downtown landscape. So, yeah, we certainly.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's a plaza similar to the hub, I mean, in the summertime, that thing is always busy. It's definitely a draw, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, I don't think you absolutely need to prioritize materials and and blue line.
Those sheets are more for, they illustrate the types of sightings and rock and and metal, and that's what that was for. It wasn't to show that's the building.
Well, what you do have on Grand Avenue is you have the covered walkway. Over that, and and I also see that on that covered walkway, you have a couple of even some peaks on top of that.
Yeah.
Walkway, which kind of, uh, you know, hides, you know, the strict massing of the second floor. To a certain degree.
Sure, and yeah, and on my point, I think that at upper level massing is really not. That in stone whatsoever. Um, the idea of those little gable forms on the boardwalk roof is that they articulate.
Yeah, I see.
Um, but in general, those sort of white box drawings that you're seeing. It'll go into the whole twenty-four foot vertical before we have to make that twelve foot step back. We're going about thirteen feet vertical. So we really, we're absolutely intending to, at second floor, we need to be just. It'll really, it'll disappear.
And on on top of those buildings, uh. There's a flat roof. By the way, is that flat roof? Is that part I missed that? Is that part of the snow storage that's just gonna be right there?
You know, during our early meeting and our workshop with the Board of Trustees, it was indicated that if we have flat roof construction, we can count it towards snow storage. We have so much plaza space in there, that snow storage from the project itself, from the alleys, will always serve. On-site in that plaza. But yes, the the buildings will definitely be accumulated from snow above, and part of the flat roof. Strategy will be to contain some of that to the head on.
Right, right.
Walkways, but now we won't have nearly as much.
And then, on the periphery of the roof. You have a wall up that I'm not sure how far is, three or four feet or?
It depends, you know, code, what code allows us to play with the height of that wall, so therefore we can increase some of that Western. Thought to sort of massing, or we can.
That's what I was getting at, yeah.
Yeah, cause as much as it's, like you said, from from the boardwalk, you may not see that that next level, obviously from the town square. Which nothing's getting built here, you certainly see it, so we'll have to make sure to. I mean, any, when you, when you do come in for that building and for that design, um, having some modeling of what it looks like from the square, um, will be important.
Absolutely, we'll, we'll plan to render it from downtown, from the lake, and and in general, that's, that's part of why I'm a part of the process, is that was certainly intending.
Right.
And I was, I was a little confused. Is that elevator shaft? Is that the one that's nearest, right on adjacent to Garfield?
Yes.
Okay.
That's sort of the main.
That's, that's the elevator shaft.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I I'd like to talk about the false fronts, um, that's something we really like to see for um, flat-roofed buildings. And since you have two of them, um, just for interest, if they could be coordinating and not matching.
Yeah, no problem. More of a balance, not a symmetry.
Yes.
So when we're talking about the regrading of the alleyway, we're not going down to Grand Avenue level, is that correct?
No, so right now, you know, the alley where it joins Garfield, that's a decent transition, and then almost right away it goes to. Right, sort of, up there. We're planning on cutting the alley down effectively so that. Cutting it down about seven feet, that about, that large area. And so we have a team of civil engineers who dug into some of the math there, and we've come up with an alley profile that does not exceed that eight percent. Overfired maximum, um, even though one of these drawings says ten percent of that was. But uh, yeah, no, the the plan with the alley and the plan with the plaza country in general is, our vision is from Grand Avenue. You can look through the plaza and see where you want it. The alley at the height is currently at. And so we're cutting down the alley at that point, sort of in the plaza area, by roughly four to five feet. And so you'll go up from Grand Avenue about three feet to the alley, and then it'll drop down. So it's not a full flattening of the plaza by any means, because we want to respect the neighbors to the east, but still use that alley and everything like that. But um, it is cutting.
Does that include necessary ADA requirements for steepness of ramps and stuff like that? I'm just kind of.
The ADA conversation isn't. Uh, the plaza that's north of the alley will be fully accessible from Grand. And the plaza that's nor- north of Lake will be accessible from Lake Avenue. The access into the plaza from the alley will be a smooth transition. We're not planning on major stairs or anything. But we aren't necessarily planning on like a mechanical lift that will get you from the lower part of the plaza up to alley level. Just because we have the Kaufman. Right there to the east. Or welcome. Um, so that's our concept, I think. We know we could fit it, but it would be a lot more hardscape in the plaza, and we'd rather see landscaping and a sort of landscape there.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if there's requirements for that as it is, but looking at the sketch here, it looks like stairs. I wasn't sure if we were looking at. You know, ADA slope ramps or anything like that.
If we get to the top and bottom of that stair from other accessible routes, and so technically, we're, we're working with it, but we want to make it.
So if you know plaza, there's just two sets of stairs, one and two.
Yeah, they're, they're very schematic right now, but you know, effectively from Grand Avenue down to the lake, top twelve, thirteen feet. To Lake Avenue, excuse, lake isn't, you know, five people.
But some of it is gonna be sloping, yeah.
Yeah, so the plaza in general has a natural slope to it, and then those, those stairs are really just conceptual. I think I'd rather not have them be structured stairs. They're more like a landscape stair, will still have railings and sort of. Um, protection devices for like any sort of like falls that might be, um. Whatever in question, but uh, in general, no, it'll be, it'll be a simple grade and a landscape there.
For that regrade, has there been any research done on depth of, you know, gas lines, relocation of. Telephone poles, how how are we looking at that? That's definitely a major question.
We've already submitted applications to Excel. On that project, um, and we've already, um, I've had meetings, uh, and applications in with, uh. Mountain Park. Our original idea was we were going to try to bury the power line from the west end of our property. Uh, the group's property on the west side, which is the back corner of the southeast corner of Rockies, to the other side. They said it's impractical, it's impossible monetarily and for them to do it. We literally have to take everybody's transformers off of all the buildings in the entire alley, they said. It's just, it it's just impossible to do it. So what we came up, I had a, on a meeting with two of the engineers at. Mountain Park early last week, and um. Now we're just talking about lowering, it's either two or three poles, moving one out of the pathway of the plaza. And lowering two or three of the poles down to the seven or eight feet of the regraded alley. Now the discussion is about, how do we do that? Do we leave a little island where that pole sticks out, we regrade everything, then plant the new poles and put it in there? Or do we dig a hole, let them redo it, and then the power line's lower, and then we grade underneath the power line? We're gathering the information right now, uh, I'm gonna try to, we, they want, we needed to get through this meeting. Because they want us to supply them with some loads, and we can't do that until we know what kind of buildings we're gonna have, and some somewhat of location, and then we'll get those load sheets. Put together with the electricians, and the electrical engineer, then we'll get that turned in along with the civil engineers grading. And then we'll get that application formally submitted with Mountain Park, but the goal is to have all that done in the next. Very short period of time, so that we can start that grading, uh, as soon as we can get around the guskets out, so we have contact with it.
I, that's what I figured, is either you do an island around the existing, which I feel like is gonna ultimately encroach into the right-of-way, you know. Gonna be driving around the island, or, yeah, getting new poles and having an extended height.
Yeah, it would be a temporary island. And just to get the grading done, but I would prefer to get it dug out and lower it. It'll be plenty of room to get it. So that's our goal at this point.
So, um, if you're bringing people, you got people coming through the plaza, you had the boardwalk going up and wrapping around Garfield. But then it just kind of dead ends at the alley. I think it'd be good to see that continued through, back to Grand Avenue. Yeah.
Yeah, we agree that it would be nice if the boardwalk extended along that, but we don't.
No, but it's, then it's, it would be within the public right-of-way, so, um, you have the option to do that. It's just if. It it doesn't make much sense to to build this kind of density and then drop people into a middle of a road and say, go find your way to Grand Avenue. Um, and you know, I was just looking at the Google Earth image, and here's probably ten people in the middle of the road is Google, is driving by, so. We, we want to try to to figure out how to. To uh, to accommodate that, so maybe it's a public-private partnership or something to that matter, but um.
Are you talking about south side Garfield, was that what you were saying?
Yeah.
It would be nice.
Okay, I I was, I thought you were talking about longer end avenue.
I think it's there, and then I, you know, I think, again, if we're, if we're gonna have a public park on Lake Avenue. We need to get a boardwalk to that, at least to that spot. To dump people out and say, hey, walk the road to the park, doesn't make much sense.
Well, we were trained by that property, that's why we did that.
Okay, so take those into consideration when you come back for your preliminary plan. Other thoughts?
I, I have something I want to bring up, um, that came up in this meeting. I will spend some time, and I'm sure I can convince the group, Dave is one of the owners of the project, I'm just the project manager. And um, the uh, the idea about the residential plus commercial breaks a note, and. I can spend the time, and if these guys will give the approval to spend the money, to try to see if we can come up with an idea to reduce that commercial. And put more residential. If you guys say, try to give it a shot. If if you guys are saying, maybe that's something that we could go with, but I don't want to do that if you're gonna say, no, we don't want residential on the main level on the lake. Um, if, that would be the prime commercial in town, it would rent up, but I don't know that it's gonna rent quickly. And that is a big concern, it's a big, big concern. That's why that building's got hit in two phases. Because we're only, we only be able to build half of it at one time.
Well, I I see, um, some of your, you know, best commercial being along Grand Avenue, along the plaza and along the lake. But Garfield, um, I think if you're going to do residential, that's probably the best, because. I mean, the lake is a huge draw, people come down there not knowing they're going to buy anything, and if the, if there's a cute shop there, they might stop and. Buy something or st- stop at a restaurant. But the concern is, you know, we're trying to build out for the future, but if that puts this project in jeopardy. I would be very worried about forcing all of that commercial space right at the moment. If it's, if it's a flex-type thing, um. Then it could be either or, and maybe that's something to talk about in the future. But then we were just talking about parking, and I don't know how, how to get parking for people there. Um, if they live in Grand Lake, they they probably walk a lot. Um, if it's short-term rentals, um. They probably won't move their car. Uh, if it's a second homeowner, when they're here, they're not gonna move their car. So that sharing, uh, like you were talking. So that sharing, uh like you were talking about in a more urban area, I don't think would work here. I'm just, you know, I I see this as a big, beautiful project and I don't want. The risk of it failing because you have so much empty um commercial space.
Well, I think the the market's gonna dictate when they can build and it it may be ten years before it. It gets built out, but I'm I'm with you. I think it'd be short sighted and our our part to say, yeah, build residential on the first floor on the way. And I think it'd be short sighted to say, yeah, put garages off of Garfield Avenue, because that would look absolutely horrible. From a pedestrian.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out, just sitting here since you guys brought it up.
Right, right.
To get into the building and have it under where nobody would see the garages, just have like one or two spaces. To get into some kind of a parking garage, but because of the elevation change, I don't know.
Right, right. Yeah, I I'm just so, yeah, I'm.
But it's worth a spending some time trying to figure that out. And we will do that and see if we can. Maybe when we come back, we'll present, hey, here's what we can do with that and. We're gonna stick with the original.
Maybe a preliminary sketch, because maybe not everyone else feels the way I do and and this certainly has to go to the board and I don't know how they would feel about it. I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, I want this to succeed and I see all this empty commercial space and that worries me.
Yeah, I think we're completely. Add to the mix, a part of the. In I don't calculation that we've been working up to this point is within the mixed beach project with a certain balance of. That dictates the requirement for. And we landed. By planning for that fifty foot. And so if we were to now reassess based on residential. Um we really think that we've struck a nice balance with the open space number and if that needs determined to something that wasn't. Oh combined through the prescription and and fire and. It would be it'd be nice to get indications from you guys in terms of what direction.
Could you, I'm I'm not in favor of the residential on the at all on the first floor, but.
That sets a precedent precedence for every commercial project coming into Grand Lake that.
Yeah, that's.
Well. Point about the, you know, the commercial space right on Lake Avenue being empty and. Along with that, just for reference, uh over at the Boardwalk Plaza, you have. How many uh commercial spouses you have in the back there and uh are those uh being occupied or rented?
Well, they were originally intended to be commercial, but it was re- permitted to be resi- they're residential now. So those extra smaller spaces that were.
Yeah.
Time the the two small ones.
Yeah.
Because we couldn't get anybody to fill those spaces. And um.
Well, there were a couple of them, I think.
There was three.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that were commercial.
Well, it's the code reads that you can put commercial or residential. As long as it's not on the front fifty feet of the lot and those are not, they're in the back. So we built that those out as individual comments. Those were finished and CO'd in the spring and this lasted of twenty-four. The market was pretty rough this summer, so we didn't get anything sold, but um it's uh hopefully this spring we'll get some things turned.
And that was oh, part of making them residential, you have that extra uh metal uh.
Yes, yeah.
So um. I think something else that'll be important at time of preliminary plat is understanding the grading plan and the phasing of the grading and the phasing of the. Tree removal and stuff like that. Um you know, because like that, there's a nice, very nice Aspen stand there at the corner of Garfield and Lake Avenue. That if it's ten years before you're gonna get there and build, it'd be a shame to have a blank hillside with nothing on it. For ten years.
That's a really good point. Ever thought about?
Yeah, I think it'd just be nice to see how your your grading can work and and maybe at least maintain that corner. Until you're ready to to actually get in there.
Or maybe we start on that side instead and then the plaza just seems bigger. And and then have just switch the phases, build the Garfield side first and then with the plaza side, but I get I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
We'll discuss that. It's a really good point.
So that law.
Because it would be very ugly for several years. I agree with that.
I know what you label that southwest building as, but that's two phases, correct? The largest structure?
Yes. Yeah, that's a really good, good point. Maybe we could even re-landscaped it, just something temporary if we weren't planning on doing it.
Right.
Maybe bringing a landscape plan and here's what we'll do in the meantime until we have to redo it.
Okay.
So on that map, it would be. Pushing seven A and seven B.
I don't know what the numbers are John without looking.
Yeah, on on that flat.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, once you get in.
Those are not, let me let me say something. I'm sorry, interrupted.
No, no.
Those phases are not like, we're gonna go from one to ten. Those are just phases. We could do. Phase two and phase eight. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Just numbered that way.
Sure.
We could lever them or do whatever with them. It more has to do with title insurance and building permits.
I guess that's a question maybe in this is for maybe for Josh or. Or maybe you guys know, but so the next step is to go to preliminary plat. You're gonna come in with engineer drawings. Plating the entire site, but we're not actually moving to approval of any of the structures. Is that correct? That's another separate phase then?
No.
Design of the structures, because we're not looking to do all those.
We will bring the design for the structures in with us.
Yeah, yeah, if I may, uh Mr. Chair, so the intent is the. The preliminary plat with the preliminary development plan, we're in those kind of concurrent since they relate to each other, the plating with that. Development plan. So the development plan would have more of the specifics fleshed out. That you've seen from the sketch plan, a lot of the feedback you've provided, kind of some of those elements addressed, the architectural things, and I forgot to mention that earlier, that we had a lot of good talks with. Uh the applicants representatives on a lot of those same topics you brought up and shared a lot of those same comments, so. Um those are things that I know they're gonna be working on, but what they have to do first before they get to that phase is request the variances. That we kind of highlighted, at least those core four. And that's why I was kind of waiting to see where the discussion was going regarding the ground floor fifty-foot residential versus commercial. On whether that was an additional variance ask that the applicant needs to ask for. Based on where the commission's temperature is. So the variance is kind of the next thing that you all would likely see. So then the applicant knows that they can move forward with the more refined development plans that has the preliminary. Um utilities, infrastructure, all those pieces.
How long does a major development plan last? Like, how long is it good for if we're approving buildings that could be built several years from now?
Um so I'd I'd have to remember, uh look back at code to double check, because the intent is they'll do preliminary and then they're gonna move right into their final. Um you know, talking to the applicants representatives, they're interested in getting started this next building cycle. And you know, there's been some of the confusion delays with staffing and and some of the logistics and so what we're doing is looking at, you know, the build cycle and that. March-April timeframe and backtracking, so that way we can try and hit all their those deadlines um over the next, you know, three to four months. Um so after preliminary, the intent is final and I would just, I'd have to double check in code what. You know, the timeframe is for that vesting of of those proof plans, but I think. In most codes, and I I can't speak for Grand Lakes, just because again I have to revisit it. If you're making progress and you're working through the phases, you know, in a certain period of time, let's say it's a. Two year and then at year one and a half, another permit is pulled on a phase. Usually that allows that continuation of a project. Um but I I again, I'd have to double check what the code says specifically on that.
Okay, thank you.
But. Respond to that question? That is one of the things that I I don't, I didn't have it on my list tonight, but it is one of the things I was gonna bring in clarifying, but. In the past, what I've done for groups in this situation is. Depending on, because we don't, I don't, I asked that question already, what the timing is and I never got a straight answer yet, um so hopefully we'll get that soon. But I do not foresee this project meeting those deadlines. So when we bring in our design of the buildings along with the development plan, that, let's say that lasts for three years or two years or four years or five years, but. In the past, what we've done is for the phases, you would have a density and a square footage and a height. So that if things change for the architecture of the of the town and the code, as long as we stay within the square footage guidelines for that phase. The density for that phase that we establish now and the height of that phase. We're okay, so as long as building materials or designs in the building need to be. Messed with, then we're not having to go back and revisit all that, because we are basing. The project's income and sustainability and viability. Um off of the square footage and the density at this point and to get five years down the road, you guys are in different positions. The current board is gone, everything changes again and they say, no, we're not gonna let you do anything, your stuff's expired, everything goes bust. So we have to have some guidelines, because it's not really clear in the code how long that lasts.
And I agree, I I don't, I'm not really comfortable trying to to approve all the designs of buildings that. Could or could not be built for a number of years, so I think if if there's a way through the code to do that. And then you you are bringing those buildings to the planning commission to review and approve at time of actual construction. Because that's what, I mean, the code does state that the planning commission has to approve those in the commercial district. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree with that. As long as we have guidelines, you got this density approved, here you are. You got this many square feet approved, here you are.
Right.
You got this height approved, here you are. And then we have to stay within those guidelines and if I get hit by a bus tomorrow and somebody else is. The project manager for this, Dave has to step in, he at least has guidelines that he can work by. So if it's fifteen years from now, that 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 site knows what it's gonna be. And the actual design is not a hundred percent, but the size of it is is.
Yeah, but I mean, I think site plans are only good for three years through vesting.
See, that's the problem we gotta talk about, yeah.
So you'd have to work something out probably with council to.
Right, that's why.
Extend that vesting, so.
Yeah, for these ideas to be put out there.
Yeah.
Like when you do a big subdivision, let's say it's a hundred lots, you never build through a hundred lots in the vesting period, even by the state's vesting period.
Right.
And and so there's always lots that are, there's lots all over this town that have been here since it was platted a hundred years ago. And so the lots still exist and the codes are there for it to to build on, just as long as you meet the current code, as long as we know. Here's how many units, I've already said it twice, you're already here. So I appreciate that. And that is something I do want to make sure that we talk to the town board about. And that that we have those guidelines out there for those phases.
And for each of each of the building phases, it it will have a start and a projected end date for. The phase phases as you're going along.
Yeah, so say seven years from now, John, that. You have to come see planning commission, here's your guidelines, you got seven units you can put on that site, up to thirty foot tall or whatever the guideline says. And this many square feet and as long as you stay within that, then as long as you meet the current design and 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 material. Materials at the time, because those those things aren't timeless, materials aren't, they change. And you want to try to make it as modern as possible.
Jim, real quick, while you're still up, you you talked about, you know, square footage staying the same and all this. I've found two different sets of. Square footage for this design. Can you confirm which of those would be correct possibly?
I can't right now without him telling me which one's correct, because if if you can go ahead and ask us. And if we can, we will, absolutely.
So uh in the Scottman dictation, I found sixty-six. Thousand five hundred fifty-nine as a total and then here on the drawings is sixty-seven. Uh one hundred seventy and then the commercial having a little bit of a variation by about. Twenty-five hundred as well, so or fifteen hundred.
Yeah, trustee Sabone, we will um that will be tightened up when we bring in preliminary plan and the development plan. Um we've changed this at least eight or ten times. It's been a lot of time on it. And so as we bring that in, once we get the variances, we'll know where we're at and then we'll tighten that all up and bring it in. Because there has been numbers which I I tried to read through that and make sure everything fit right. I'm not seeing what you're reading, but we will tighten those up. Make sure it's right. Dave and I have fixed those numerous times. I've caught him and called him and said, hey, this is wrong and I must have missed that one.
Do I do I assume I I didn't read anything about affordable or workforce or attainable or any housing? I assume there is none for.
No, we originally had planned to put in a couple of units um in the back of the big building. Um we actually were gonna put one unit in there and then we were gonna add a unit down at portal, take one of the units that was constructed down there and. Use that as the other unit we needed.
Okay.
Or maybe it was two units, two units. Uh but since with all of Steve's hard work and the and the board's hard work and everyone else has been involved with the uh. Hope with the space to create, there's all those units are coming online. We have a lot of units that are available now down at Park, I said Keaton Park. At Portal and I frankly don't see a need for it at this point, so we have pulled those out. Reduced our square footage of residential uh and um we're just gonna pay the fee. Whatever the uh when we record, we just don't see a need for it.
Right. And that that's, as I'm saying for for the trustees that are are here. Um obviously with a development agreement, if you're asking for extended vesting, um there's that option for trustees to negotiate. Some additional public improvements and things that need to be done.
I see.
Take that into consideration, like talking about like the additional boardwalk connections, things like that.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
James, is that like an in lieu type of thing basically rather?
No, I mean, the the, I'm just saying that you have, the the board will have the option to negotiate if if he's asking for vesting above and beyond what the state allows. Or what the code allows for. The the town has the option to ask for other. Amenities.
Monetary or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, so. But that's something that I'm assuming staff would negotiate and then bring back to the board.
So under the existing circumstances, you guys require a hundred and four parking spots. Is that what I understand?
I haven't read that for a couple of weeks.
I believe so, based on the start of our calculations and our and our unit calc's based on bedroom. That's what it's reading.
Now, uh if I understand correctly, that's two parking spots per. Single family dwelling, whatever the terminology is, or is that per, now that you said bedroom, I kind of opened up my eyes.
It's for bedrooms, so we have units that vary from studio, one bedroom to two and three bedroom units and we're using the apartment. For those calculations, um just because they are apartment homes, they're active, they're.
Correct. And some of those parking spots that you guys are allotting for within the alleyway there. The right drawing here. Um involve some kind of garages, is that correct? Yep, and it seems like those are two vehicles deep, is that correct? For some, some of them, not all of them. I just wanted to confirm that.
And there's a garage for every unit?
Every unit, yeah.
Is that, so as I'm kind of looking at what's on Grand Avenue uh for the two structures. The parking within that building covers that building or is there some still over?
Almost entirely. Every resident will be parked in their building. There is one unit. The unit that's above the tree house that we're calling it, um no, that's parked in the tree house. There's one unit on the top of the lake house that's parked in the event center. Um but their connection is almost entirely indoors.
I think we have one unit that's. In the big building that is across the alley.
One in building one that's in, parked in building two.
I don't know the building two, but it's one building.
But that's, that's it, there's, yeah, there's there's two that aren't parked in their building, but they're directly adjacent.
Yeah, and that's where I kind of figured that. As I look at the Grand Avenue ones, seems like maybe some of those. More parking than it seems like they might need based off the sketch here, so that's what kind of caught my eye there.
Absolutely.
The alleyway uh parking uh garages, uh since it is kind of a narrow uh. To get in. Hopefully you would have, you know, nine foot rather than eight foot garage door openings.
I I hate.
Get in there is.
Absolutely, yeah, it's a nine foot door minimum, I'm sure on every garage. Um I may have even drawn some on sticks, but yeah, you'll be able to. You'll be able to turn out, back out, front out.
Even a ten foot garage or, you know, it's kind of tight over on the Park Avenue lots for them to get in.
Sure, yeah.
All right, other questions? Hopefully between you guys and uh and Josh, you guys have taken a lot of notes, so that. There's a lot to talk about when, I'm sure when this is over, so um.
And what we've done is is kind of reviewed uh and made comments on a lot of the sketch plans and. And what we've done is, is kind of reviewed, uh, and made comments on a lot of the sketch plans and. And we're just making a informal preliminary review. To determine some conditions that might be. In the, uh, preliminary and final development applications. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it doesn't even look like we need to make a motion. Right, just kind of giving feedback.
For ultimate clarity, I think what I heard from Josh and from you guys is that the next step would be. Officially review the variance request and then move directly into preliminary plat and development sort of concurrently and then from there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I'm glad you guys are optimistic of the March April. Approval timeframe, but that's pretty tight for variances and then turn it around, plummeting and stuff. Um, does the town have an engineer that they will be reviewing these plans or? Ayers doing that as part?
Yeah. The town asks to utilize our team, um, for that, so we can look at all those details. Currently is kind of a team.
Yeah, awesome. That's, I just wanted to make sure we had a, you know, an engineering firm looking at all these details.
Yes, one of the things that we spoke about specifically when Ayers has, um. Traffic engineer on staff and we haven't had to deal the traffic studies in the past, but. This is probably one of our second or third highest density roads. That are in town in terms of traffic. So it'll be important that. It goes to what the commission has been talking about, just to make sure that. Those items that are talked about, the cul-de-sac and all of that is able to manage the traffic that's anticipated. And I think they'll be able to help us move that along.
All right. Well, my reference, Jay, is it, uh, what's your last name? Oh, Dave.
Gabe.
Oh, Dave. Dave.
Call me Jay.
Last name is what? Bello, okay. And, uh, Mr. Dave over there is. Sloan?
Sloan.
Sloan, I'm sorry, yeah. And Mr. Ayers with the beard is. Scott?
Josh.
Josh, okay, I do. My hearing is not the greatest.
And I will, I will forward all of you their information.
Few more questions. We talked about the snow storage, including the, the roofs, uh, the flat roofs. Being accounted for that. Does that fall in our code or anything, or just want to see where that, this is my first time hearing that. You know, flat roofs count toward this. How does that?
Yes, there, there is a line in the code that specifically allows for it. I don't have the, the.
That's fine. Beyond those flat roofs, is there snow storage? Okay, I just, I wasn't sure if those.
Yeah, the plaza, the plaza is ample state.
Yeah, you pick it up, throw it on the landscaping and, and that's kind of where I fall into this. Obviously private property maintained by your HOA, is that correct for the plaza? Cause we did mention that the park would possibly, you know, be deeded and if you were in, if we were interested in. Doing maintenance there as, as needed. So I just wanted to confirm that the plaza itself would re- remain in that HOA.
Absolutely. And I can clarify in case it was a worry, no one's going to be out there with a digger putting snow in the ground onto a roof.
Um, it's kind of coinciding with that, we kind of enter the stormwater situation, you know, flat roofs collect water. Gets ejected, plaza collects water. What's the plan for that ultimately? Are we?
You know, so we have, so our team of civil engineers drew up a pretty big drainage exhibit. And essentially the way the lot breaks down, there are two drainage zones north of the alley and three south of the alley. Everything north of that alleyway drains towards Grand Avenue in those existing inlets, the existing infrastructure can handle that. And everything south of the alley will drain towards the lake and the inlet drains there. Um, it's pretty simple when it breaks down, especially with our building footprints being as simple as they are. Um, so it'll, it'll absolutely work.
Boardwalk plaza currently, it's tapped into a stormwater line there. Is that what you would intend to do with this water? Cause if I imagine it coming out of the, the curb area on the north. On the south side of Grand Avenue, you know, you're gonna get a lot of breeze action there. So that's kind of what I'm trying to stray away from is. Is just, uh, water flowing out of the curb and stuff like that, so.
We'll probably drop them under Grand Avenue before the boardwalk in terms of the drainage path, because we certainly don't want to have people running over ice.
And same on Lake Avenue, I assume tying into the storm.
Yeah, Lake Avenue will be an easy one, because we're rebuilding that whole boardwalk curve anyway, so we'll drain under it.
Other questions? All right, well, thank you guys.
Thank you all.
I have one more. I just, I, I, I keep looking at this western aspect of, of a large building and. What we're looking at now, you know, what? You guys have mentioned forty feet, above forty feet, maybe fifty feet. What, what is this possible height for this variance that we're looking for actually, you know?
You know, the way we've written the variance and the way we've, uh, sort of. Elaborated in terms of the explanation of hardship there is a 50 foot height allowance from the alley level. Right? Which is technically sort of the high corner on that western aspect. And what that allows for is it allows for us to have a sort of, a sort of mountain architecture roof line on top of that building. Instead of it being a large flat mass. Um, and during that variance discussion, we'll provide some more drawings to sort of elaborate on how the massing steps back and fits well. Um, it certainly won't be a 50 foot vertical wall on any facade of the building.
Yeah, I think the step backs will be important. Um, I think, you know, some modeling or some rendering from. The fishing pier or the boardwalk along the lake of what that's going to look like.
No problem at all, absolutely.
Yeah. That's it. All right, well, thank you again for, uh, for presenting this. Obviously with you a lot at you. And, uh, yeah, we'll look forward to the next steps.
Do you need comment from the? Crowd or anything like that? I know we had a comment, you're good. Hey, I just wanted to make sure.
Josh, anything else for you?
Nothing else on my end. Um, just so the commissions aware, obviously this was our first presentation in front of you also. Look forward to working with, uh, Chairman Shaki and Steve on kind of refining. And getting you exactly what you need for presentations moving forward, whether that's a slide deck or other materials. And the same with the memos, it's always a good time to kind of revisit. Are you getting everything you need to evaluate, make sound decisions or recommendations? So I think that's a good kind of effort here as we get it after the holidays maybe. So. Look forward to having those conversations.
Our plan, we have taken the, the current memo forms. We've made no changes at all to them. So you'll see the same word, basically to. Give them some previous memos, give them copies, cut it out, paste it back.
Excellent. Well, if there's no other discussion, no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, this, Jim, it's just a preliminary, uh, discussion. Of the conceptual thing and, and to, you know, give some comments and that's all. But it's just a preliminary informal discussion review, is what we did today.
Okay. Well, I thank you, because we have a lot of really good input.
Very well, thank you.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting's turn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, commission.